Are we ready? Good. Good evening. I'd like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 15 Board of Education meeting for January 26, 2015, to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ross. Please, Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mrs. Taffey.
Here.
Mr. Robert.
Here.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. We will begin this evening with any announcements that board members or Dr. Lathan have.
Good evening. More than 106 through 8th grade students this past Saturday enjoyed homemade ice cream. It was just one experiment they observed during a chemical change that they engineered to be the best event at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. They also learned how medicine is absorbed in the body by absorbing the rate of decomposition of a coated and non-coated aspirin. The Central Illinois chapter of the National Society of Black Engineers teamed up with District 150 for the event. Saturday's focus was on chemical engineering. The next event is scheduled for February 21st. This runs once a month for our 6th through 8th grade students. Also, last week, we held our January Parent University at Franklin School. A very special thank you to the Franklin staff for organizing the event. We had over 20 workshops that were available to parents. Our next Parent University is scheduled for February 19th at Lincoln K. A. School.
Anybody else?
I do.
Reverend Butler?
Nearly 50 people signed in for the second of the four community forums last Tuesday night, which was held at Richwoods High School. Just want to say thank you to those that attended this event and offer their suggestions and ideas. Our next event is Tuesday, February 3rd, at Manual Academy. We will begin at 6:30 in the Commons area, just inside of the front doors. Our topics will include traditional academics, career and technical education, and potential new forms of organization. So we hope to see everyone at Manual Academy on February 3rd.
Mr. Bateman?
And just a reminder on that, if you're not able to attend, we continue to remind people to please send in your input on any topic that's been discussed, either the one that's intended for that night, or ones that have already been discussed, to info@psd150.org. Again, that's info@psd150.org. Thank you.
And I believe a thank you goes out to our unions who assisted us with sign-ins and things that were going on for the evening, so that's a big assistance for us. Any other announcements?
An acknowledgement. I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Lathan on receiving a drum major award from the Peoria Christian Leadership Council. Thank you.
Anything else? That'll bring us to our presentations. We're going to start tonight with the high school registration and course catalog. Dr. Lathan?
Yes, the staff will come on down front. We're excited. It's that time of year, every January. The last week of January, we hold our curriculum fairs at our three high schools, and then the next week, students start with their high school registration. It's an exciting time in a young person's life as they start looking and getting prepared for life at the high school. We're excited to be implementing, again, for the third year in a row, online registration. And then we have a high school catalog for our board members and also for community members if anyone needs one. Also, the handbooks are on the district website. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Tana.
Good evening, Dr. Lathan, Mrs. Wolfmeyer, Reverend Butler, and board members. Thank you for allowing us to come. We are excited because we're starting high school registration, so our current seniors are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel because they're not involved in this. And our 8th graders are thrilled because they're getting ready to get out of uniforms and lines. So they're getting ready to come to the high school. Each student in the district has now received the new catalog for this year, which you have at your seats. They also have received a flyer for our curriculum fairs. Our curriculum fairs, Peoria High, will be tomorrow night from 4:30 to 6:30. Rich Woods will be Wednesday night, 4:30 to 6:30. And Manual will be Thursday night from 4:30 to 6:30. We ask that you even come out and see what our schools are offering. It is a chance for parents to actually meet with teachers to discuss what the classes entail. They'll see examples of course syllabi, projects, textbooks that are utilized in the courses. It's also a time for us to showcase what goes on at each high school. They say that the students who are involved and engaged the most are the ones who really are successful. There's more than just going and picking up a book and studying. So many of our high schools have extracurricular activities, clubs, organizations after school. These will also be showcased so that parents say, you know what, you don't have to come home and sit on the couch. You love drawing. There's an art club after school. Let's see how to get you involved in that. So we're very excited about this. Woodruff Career and Technical Center will also be at each curriculum fair. So we will be setting up to showcase all of the programs that we currently offer, as well as our new programs that we will be offering next year. Not only so that our rising juniors and seniors can start registering for those classes, but also so that our current 9th graders and 10th graders will know what they need to be doing in order to be able to be eligible for these classes. One thing we're very excited about is our second year of online registration. In the front of each book, each student has directions, so if they are a current 9th, 10th, or 11th grade, after attending the fair and meeting with their teachers, as well as sitting down with their parents and discussing what they want to take, students can go online and put those requests into the system. This allows the process to go a lot smoother. It allows, number one, that conversation between the parent and the student to happen. So many times, parents think that once they get to high school, whoo, good, I'm done. They're grown. This is when they need their parents the most. We need to be educating and knowing what our kids are taking and getting involved in. You cannot register for this through the parent-family access. The students will need to go to the student-family access. The reason for that is, when the students put these courses into the system, it automatically downloads into the counselor's queue, so that when they meet one-on-one, and our counselors will meet one-on-one with every student before the middle of March, in order to go through and make sure that the courses they selected, they are eligible for, and to have those critical conversations to make sure they have picked the right classes in line for graduation. When the students go through the student access, this downloads automatically into the counselor's queue to make those conversations go more smoothly. So we're encouraging all students who are current 9th, 10th, and 11th graders to do this, complete this online registration. Counselors are setting up at lunches during the day. The computer labs will also be open at night at the curriculum fairs, and there will be a counselor available to be able to help them. Students will log in using their student ID and their password, which they're used to doing every day in class. So you can see Ms. Tana's going to help us do this. Mr. Bradley McKenzie, who is a current junior at Rich Woods, has given us permission to use him tonight, so we have asked permission before we put this up. He will then click on the left-hand side onto Schedule. Once he does this, up in the right-hand corner, you see Request Courses for 2015-2016. He will click this. Every student at every high school will take seven periods of courses. So we must make sure that we have a total. If you look in the top right-hand corner, right now, he has no credits registered for next year. All students know that they must get seven credits registered for next year. Now, we obviously know, since we start out with English IV, that Bradley must be a junior since there's no English I, English II, English III there. So students, it will start where we know they should be. So let's give Bradley, let's give him English IV in Rich for next year. We will click on the first English IV in Rich that he sees, and we will say Add This Course. We will try it again. Oh, they're good. It went. If you notice, we take two semesters. Our state in Illinois, they must take, they get a half a credit for first semester and a half a credit for second semester. To keep students from having to remember to register for first semester and then turn around and register for second semester, the courses are automatically tied together, so it populates on its own. So we now have one credit, and Bradley knows by using this registration book and as a guide, that he's got to have four years of English to graduate. In the inside of your book, on page five, we've got the graduation requirements, which will help Bradley and his parents know what he needs to be doing in order to register. Bradley has told me, as his counselor, that he is probably looking into going into engineering, so I want him to take heavy math and heavy science. I've been talking about it. I'm sure his parents have been doing the same thing. So I'm going to put a notice on his transcript, and he knows he's in AP Physics I this year, so we want him to take AP Physics II next year. He can type that in at the bottom and search, so that he doesn't have to know it if he doesn't have his book with him. If he has his book with him, he can put the course number in it. Once again, he'll select AP Physics II, Add the Course, and it automatically populates. If we look up at the top, we now know Bradley has two credits, so he needs five more credits in order to finish. We know that he needs a strong math background. If he is really interested in going into engineering, we're pushing him. So we're going to put Bradley into Calculus Enriched. He's been in trig. So this puts him in those classes. We'll stop there. We just wanted you to get a brief picture of what online registration. But here's another thing. Sometimes courses may fill up, or if enough people have not signed up for it, we may not need to offer it. Unfortunately, sometimes we can't always get in touch with the student over the summer, so there is an request alternates tab. We have asked each student, it's in the registration book, and the counselors have reviewed this with them, to put in at least two alternates. This allows us to know what Bradley may want to take in the chance he doesn't get his first seven courses. It also allows him to prioritize that, so he can choose what he would want as his number one choice, and then what he wants as his number two choice. If students forget that, we reach out and try to call. If not, we use their transcripts and our knowledge of the students to give them what they want. Once they get their schedules in the summer, if it's not, there is a period where they can come in and change that. But we strongly encourage students to do the request alternates course. This is a great tool. Once again, not only this piece right here, the counselors will use it when Bradley goes into the office at Rich Woods, his counselor will pull this up to discuss the courses he selected. But the main reason we're excited about it is, we want parents and students to be using this. When Bradley goes Wednesday night to the curriculum fair with his parents, we would love for them to go down. We're going to push them to go down to the computer lab to sit and have these conversations after going through all of those booths, to see what it is there is to offer, so that you have those critical conversations. If they opt not to do it there that night, we want parents, they have until midnight, February 6th, to complete online registration. It's important that you're talking with your son or daughter, so that you know what they are signing up for, to benefit them as they move forward in their high school career. Yes, sir?
On the alternate courses, are those being reviewed by the counselors? When they sit down and look at all of this, are they also, to keep you guys from having to call and track them down, are they reviewing those with them as well?
Yes, sir. If I was his counselor, and let's say Calculus Enriched did not make, I would look at his alternate to see what else did he choose. I would go to his first one first, and then to his second one next. Yes, sir. We're excited about what we are doing. As I said, the registration book, one of the things we've told students and we're encouraging families, this is your bible when you enter 9th grade. What's in here is for the 9th graders to use throughout their high school years. However, we also encourage all students to use it. This book is filled with information on various colleges. Peoria Public Schools is a partner with College Board, and we use Big Future as a way to help kids plan for college. We tell our kids, you cannot wait until you get into your junior and senior year to decide you want to go to school. Truthfully, you start in kindergarten nowadays, but it gives you a step-by-step process of what to do when you're in 9th grade. What is it you should be doing? And this is especially important for parents. If you've not had that experience, and even if you have, as an educator, when my son went away the first time, I felt like I was in a different world. And luckily, there were guides out there like this to help guide me. So those are important. We also put a section in there for athletics, for eligibility. If you plan on playing ball after college, our athletic directors will be available at each curriculum fair. But NCAA no longer requires 14 courses, as some think. It's 16 courses that you must have in order to play ball after high school. So those are important things that people can read. We also have a section in there. We're excited that we're getting ready to start with our Illinois learning plans, with our students leaving 8th grade, that they're going to know what pathway they may want to follow. So there is a page on 25 and 26 that will help them know if you're interested in a certain field, these are courses that we offer in Peoria Public Schools, so you should be taking those. So we have a lot going on, a lot of positive that we're doing, and very excited about this week, getting, rolling it out and getting people started. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Coy?
Yeah, it's very interesting how this is being put together. At the Parent University the other evening, I saw the presentation about career cruising. How would you link the recommendations and the outcomes of career cruising with this type of course selection?
When our students are doing their career cruising, and they're getting their pathways, and where their targeted interests are, it gives them the courses they should be taking in high school. So we're excited, because that is a direct link to this book. So it says you need to take four years of math. You need to take extra courses in science. So that way, our kids know which section of this book they need to focus on. You only need three sciences to graduate. However, if you're going into a field that's strong in science, embedded science in it, and it will show up in those career cruising profiles, then you know you need to take more science electives, as opposed to maybe taking an extra weight training or an extra art course. You may want your science to be an elective. So they marry each other beautifully. It's very exciting.
Thank you.
Yes. At Woodruff this year, we're very excited. Our students will leave next year from Woodruff with a CNA license, as well as a phlebotomy certificate. We are partnering with ICC. I said I want to go back to high school, because I just think this is exciting. Our first year of students will be next year. Students who are in the program this year, as well as in the Rich Woods Dual Credit Classes, will next year start off. They will actually do a CNA practicum. ICC has already set that up. I believe we're working with Peoria Heights Rest Home Facility. And then we will also, when they finish that in a semester, they'll start writing with the phlebotomy, in order to get that certificate when they graduate. So we're encouraging our students, if the medical field is where you're wanting to go to, they will be able to leave us with a license that allows them to be employed. But if you're looking to go into the medical field, whether it be a sports trainer, a doctor, a nurse, having this on your resume when you leave is incredible. It will open many doors and scholarships for our students.
Can you just briefly discuss the background requirement, background check requirement? Is that something that's been added to our book as it relates to this course?
Correct. We are working with ICC, and in order to be in this program, students must take a drug test, as well as have a background check. Because we will be doing internships in the businesses, these are the same requirements of a person who is employed in that field, so our students must meet those requirements, pass those tests, in order to be able to participate in this program. It's done at the very beginning of the semester. Within that 15-day change window, in case there's someone who is ineligible, we can get them enrolled in a class before they get too far behind. We've been advertising this to our current students who are in these programs, so that they know we have it in our book. ICC will also be at the curriculum fairs, and they will be doing a presentation for our parents to help them understand the legality issues.
Now, in the event, on the background investigation, if something should come back, are there waivers that can be put in?
ICC explained this to us, that there may be a situation where a student may have received a charge, and with ICC, their board may say, this is waived. We won't have that power. That will come down to ICC and what that place of employment would want to say. A lot of times, and one of the things they explained to us to share with our students is, even when you're making a bad choice out of anger, what that may show them is, in your field, something may also cause you to get anger. We've got to learn how to control that. So it would be up to them with that aspect, and they would discuss it with the parent and the student, if that were to come, to come up.
Mrs. Ross?
Could you highlight a little bit? I heard you mentioned the CNA and the phlebotomy when they leave there. What about cosmetology?
Cosmetology? We've had that program for several years. It's one of our flourishing programs. Our students are leaving there with a cosmetology license. It's a two-year program. They must have 1,500 hours of work in by their senior year. Then they take the cosmetology licensure exam, and when they leave, they have that. Our students, we are open for anyone around the horseshoe or behind me who would like to get their hair done. We offer discounted prices. We're open all day, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I've had my eyebrows waxed. It's a great thing. They still, I still have hair up there, so they know what they're doing. They do that. They do great hair. They do nails. We're also open one Saturday a month. We've got quite a few regulars. They complain when we close the month of July, because they have nowhere to go get their hair done, but we kind of need a break, our students and our teachers. So we're excited about that. We continue to move forward with that, have standing room only in those classes. Our students are leaving there, also going to college. We had one young lady last year who finished, got her license, and on the weekend, she's working at a salon, but her ambition is to be a lawyer. She wants to go through law school, but she said, I want to have something passionate to do for extra spending money that I enjoy. So we are excited about that, about our kids leaving with those programs.
Well, you just did last year, but last year added the bothering piece.
Yes.
And then, of course, you know, the natural hair care or braiding piece that still is like less than 1,500 hours.
Yes.
Like $300.
It's 300 hours. It can be done in one year. So currently, we offer numerous. We offer autobody. We offer construction trades. Our construction trades two kids just got selected to rebuild the putt-putt course in Washington that was torn down by the tornado, so that is very exciting. You'll see our kids on the news, working with that. We also offer engineering. We offer culinary, CNA, phlebotomy. We offer cosmetology, hair braiding, and precision metal. And next year, we will also be offering early childhood. Lots going on. Eventually, we want a one-stop shop. We want to move our autobody down, so you can get your hair done, your car done. You can get something fixed in our construction shop, and you can eat lunch all in one day. Next year, we will be opening our cafe for people to come and eat lunch with us. And I think that would be awfully something important for the Woodruff alum who want to look at their pictures on the walls and have a little cafe snack with us. $5 lunch. You can't beat that.
Mr. Coy?
Yeah, just in terms of the IB enrollment, how is that looking, and what are the trends in that?
IB, we have grown that tremendously. Currently, we have approximately 85 to 90 diploma candidates in our junior and senior year, so that is doubled since Mr. Bowlby has started out there. We currently have 180 to 190 current pre-IB 9th and 10th graders that are in that program. So definitely have doubled that in the last couple of years, since we've established and rebuilt the program, to make sure we're doing it with fidelity. So that also is growing. Our advanced placement programs are growing. We're excited, because next year, we start the AP Capstone, which is for another board meeting, but our students will be taking AP seminar next year at our three high schools. So we are where remarkable is definitely happening.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Sounds great.
Thank you very much. No, I think they're going to, you're going to use it again.
Yes.
That will bring us to the next presentation, which is on the Quest Contract Renewal Overview. Dr. Lathan?
Really excited that we will present tonight background information as it relates to the Quest Charter School Renewal Agreement, and then ask the board to formally approve it at the February 9th board meeting. So excited, although that the last several months have come to an end. We're excited that our parents in District 150 and in our Peoria community will continue to have choice as an option for the next five years. So Mr. Redberg, our chief legal officer, and Mr. Will Coxon will present this information.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to begin the presentation and talk more about an overview. This is not going to be as exciting as this last presentation. I thought maybe the only thing I might do to compete with it would be to do a dramatic reading of the proposed contract, but I don't think we have time for that. We have, what I have put together is just a summary of the major aspects of the new agreement with Quest. We're still at a point, and I think with tonight's meeting, there's an opportunity if board members want additional discussion or want things changed in this agreement, I think that it's still possible at this point. The intention is to bring this to the board for approval at its next meeting. So with that, let's move on. Can I have the next slide, Pierre? Chris?
Oh, you've got it. We have the... What are you pointing at, the projector or the computer?
Computer.
Okay. All right. We began with the, I worked with the lawyer for Quest on the actual contract document. We began with the current agreement, and I would say probably 80 to 85 percent of the language from the current agreement is also in the proposed new agreement. So the major changes are, this is a five-year agreement. The current agreement was also a five-year agreement. So this one will be in effect from July 1st until June 30th of 2020. The document clarifies that Quest has access to the District 150 Safe Schools Program at Woodruff on a space-available basis. It clarifies that Quest will have access to District 150 gyms for athletic events in accord with District Policy 822. And the next slide, please. And probably the most, the major portion of the new agreement is a new funding formula, which Mark is going to talk about in a few minutes. And another aspect of this, one of the thoughts behind the new funding formula is to put Quest on a funding base of money. In the first five years of the contract, they had a significant amount of seed money from foundations. That money, obviously, was by definition startup money, and it was expended. So I think it's fair to say that the Quest budgets for the first few years of operation were somewhat distorted by the presence of that startup money. So now, I think we have a better idea of what the total operating cost for Quest would be on the long term. So this funding formula is an attempt to put them on a meaningful base funding level at this point. As a part of that, District 150 is going to forgive the remaining $210,000 balance on the loan to Quest for the... $210,000 balance on the loan to Quest for the purchase of the Lauks and Columbia School Buildings in 2012. Quest is, in other matter, Quest is going to use the District 150 Student Information System, the Skyward system that was just up on the screen, for all Quest students previously used, it was previously used only for special education students. And with respect to special education students, the, although, although Quest is a separate corporate entity from, from District 150 and in many respects is, is independent of the district, it's a little different in special education because by law, even, even though we have Quest, District 150 is still the, the legal authorizing agency for special education services for those students. So District 150 is ultimately legal and legally and financially responsible for Quest's special education students. So our own special education staff feels that the report that we're asking Quest to put together here at the beginning and the end of each year is going to help them do a better job of oversight for Quest's special education students.
Mr. Redberg?
Yes.
Right. It's important for the public to understand that $210,000 balance that we're forgiving on the loan is over a seven-year period. So it's not like we're giving up a whole lot in one period. It's over a significant period.
The total purchase price for those two buildings was $300,000 and, and three payments have been made to date $90,000. So that leaves 210. Is that correct? Right. The next item is that District 150 is going to, going forward, provide legal defense for due process legal proceedings involving District 150's special education students enrolled in Quest. And this is also coincides with District 150's role as the LEA or the Legal Authorizing, LAE rather, Legal Authorizing Agency for Quest student. The current contract, it has it the other way around, and I don't know why it was done that way. I wasn't here when they did it and I wasn't able to find the history on that, but District 150 is the legal authorizing agency, so it should be defending these cases when they come up. And actually, I don't believe that in the past five years that there have been any major due process cases, but, but if there are any, District 150 will be defending them going forward. Another provision in the contract is that Quest is no longer limited to one named vendor for school management or operational services. It may select another qualified vendor or no outside vendor. All, and by law, under the Charter School Acts, selection of a vendor like that is subject to approval by the district and by the Illinois State Board of Education. The current contract specified that only concept schools could contract with Quest to provide comprehensive school management services.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to the, the school management, now are we talking about the?
Concept schools.
Concept schools?
Yes.
Okay. That brings me to what I read in the Journal Star regarding the possibility of their disconnecting themselves from this particular management company.
Yes.
I, I guess, I guess it bothered me because of the fact that I knew that we were talking with them. Were we aware of this prior to our going into negotiations with them?
No, we were not. We learned, we learned about it last week. At, at the time that we proposed this particular change in the contract language, we didn't have any information that Quest was, was planning to not renew the, the contract with concept schools. And, but we asked for the change because we just felt that the, the provision as it was written required that, that, that concept schools be the only vendor for comprehensive school management, and we felt that that was anti-competitive. So, so we proposed to take that out and they did accept that. It's a lawyer accepted it on their behalf. So the actual action that they appear to have taken is also news to the administration.
So they do not, they, they do not have to have a management company?
They do not.
Okay. Then if that be the case, when is Quest prepared to manage their own, to go on their own?
I don't have any more details about what they're planning to do other than, other than what I read in the newspaper. I don't know, maybe Dr. Lathan or Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
I don't know. Mr. Fleegy, do you want to speak to that at all or are you comfortable doing that or not?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Come here.
Yeah. Mr. Fleegy, I, Mr. Fleegy is the vice chairman of the, the board.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tom Fleegy. I'm the vice president of the board. I live at 7810 North Galena Road. And frankly, the reason that nobody told you what was going on was we didn't know. We were in conversation with them and as soon as we had reached an agreement to not renew the contract, I advised President Wolfmeyer at the earliest possible moment. Fact is that concept schools has performed very well for us in a startup phase, but the board is convinced at this point that we can take it from here. And we, although I can't announce it officially, we'll be hiring an interim executive director tomorrow night. And part of her duties will be to do the job search for permanent executive director and principal. Any other questions I can answer along those lines?
And I think, as, as we think back to when we granted the first charter, when, it seems to me like when the Quest group decided to go with a management company, it was because it was so new. And in order to get them started up and, and get the school running in, in a positive manner, they felt they needed the, the assistance of an outside management company. And, and so at this point, and, and as Mr. Fleegy said, it was late last week, I think, when I got the phone call that they were thinking that this is the direction they were going to go. So, thank you.
Okay. So while there aren't a great number of items on this list, some of them are very important, some of them are less important, but now I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about the, the new funding mechanism.
Sure. Thank you. We're going to spend a few minutes talking about the funding model, giving a little background, some of the challenges with the, the way that Quest has been funded the first five years and some of the challenges that it could present in the, in the next five years, and then talk about the recommended funding model for Quest. Just as a little bit of background, Quest 2014 revenue, these are data that were supplied by Quest to us. Their total budget is about 4.3 million. 83% of that comes from District 150 per capita revenue. So this is money that we pay to Quest each year based on their enrollments. They also receive restricted grants from the State Board of Education, and it actually follows, it's a little hard to, hard to tell, but fundraising is the third largest source that, this is $129,000 and so on. So this is just a snapshot of their revenue for 2014. This is a, the trend in their revenue over the period of the first five-year agreement. They started at 1.5 million basically, and in 2015, the per capita revenue was 1 point, or 4.1 million. As Rick pointed out, from that, we've been subtracting their mortgage payment for a net payment to them of 4.048 million. And this also shows the percent change every year.
And am I correct that one of the reasons why it goes up every year is because the number of, number of students increased every year because they added a grade, correct?
Correct, correct. It's two factors. One, it's based on our per capita tuition charge that we will talk about later. So our, that contributes to the increase, but also they've added a class basically of 75 students a year, which increases that, that revenue. The funding for the charter school is laid out in the Illinois School Code. The charter school and the local school board agree on funding any services the school district provides to the charter school. All these services are subject to negotiation between the charter school and the local school board. And the last dot point is a key. In no event shall funding be less than 75% or more than 125% of the school district's per capita student tuition, multiplied by the number of students residing in the district who are enrolled in the charter school. So we'll talk a little bit about the per capita tuition charge. So, but again, the statute provides a range of funding that we're required to be in from 75% to 125% of this per capita tuition charge. Again, the purpose of the per capita tuition charge was to set a rate for a local school district. When a non-resident student attends that school district, it would be the rate that student would be paying the local school district. So in a sense, this is an all-in cost that that student coming into a district would be paying the full cost of that education and actually more than that, that I'll show you in a second. So the per capita tuition charge is basically computed by dividing the total cost of conducting and maintaining the schools of the district by the average daily attendance, including those tuition-paying students. So narratively, the calculating the per capita tuition charge, you add all the expenses of the school district and its ed fund, O and M, debt service, transportation, IMRF, social security and TORT funds, and you subtract out of those expenditures, the expenditures that are not applicable to a regular K-12 program such as adult education and summer school. Then you also subtract restricted revenues that are basically dedicated to certain programs to come to basically unrestricted revenue that support regular K-12 programs. Then you add to that a depreciation allowance, which we'll talk about in a second, and divide that by the nine-month ADA, average daily attendance. So this is the district's per capita tuition charge for the year that was just ended. This is from our audit. So the expenditures are going to, for the funds that I mentioned, subtract out, so that's about $178 million, subtract out $21 million for those services, again, that are not applicable to a regular K-12 education like adult ed. Subtract out restricted revenues and then you add in depreciation of $7.6 million to come to total cost and divide that by the average daily attendance. Now, there are some challenges with this. I think from our perspective, there are some challenges with this, and there's also some challenges with using the per capita tuition charge, in my view, that Quest has challenges with this. From the district perspective, again, our total per capita tuition charge is $10,573. Of that total, $638 is attributable to depreciation. So in other words, there's a cost that is used to, part of the per capita tuition charge that is used for Quest funding in the past has included this charge for depreciation, which is not really a, a cash expense to the district and there's no revenue source backing up that, that cost. So, but it does increase funding for Quest. The same is true for interest expense. That's part of the per capita tuition charge, but it's not, we receive money, tax money to pay the interest expense, but when it's built into the Quest funding formula, there's no money for the district other than our unrestricted revenue, general state aid and property taxes. And the third challenge for us is we've actually been in a deficit financing position. And in 2014, $676 of that per capita tuition charge were expenditures that weren't backed up by a revenue source. So in total, it's 1787 of the per capita tuition charge, 17%. It's not applicable to either student instruction, instruction administration support, or not financed by sustainable revenues. What, what I think should be a concern to Quest, and I, this is a range in financing scenarios. The top is, I'll call overly optimistic, and the bottom part is probably overly realistic. I don't know. Just kind of made those up. But the per capita tuition charge at the top, again, this is our 2014 per capita tuition charge, and basically, the first five years we funded Quest at 85% of the per capita tuition charge. And this shows what the revenue would be over the next several years with a 2% increase in the per capita tuition charge. And for these scenarios, I used a level enrollment of 600 students, which will be the maximum student enrollment that Quest will have under the current agreement. So in this one, you see there would be a 2%, after the large bump in 2016, there would be a 2%, a 2% increase in their revenue each year that would continue again based on the increase in the per capita tuition charge. The, the scenario at the bottom has our current per capita tuition charge in '14 that's used as the base for 2016 funding, with assumptions built in in '17 and '18 that the district actually addresses the budget issues and, and brings our expenditures in line with our actual revenues. So when that happens, our per capita expenditures decrease and it would result in less funding for Quest. So under this scenario, again, 2016, Quest would receive the same amount of funding, but if our per capita tuition charge drops, their funding would actually decrease in 2017 and drop substantially in 2018. So this is kind of a worst-case scenario for Quest. The, the top scenario is probably the best-case scenario for Quest. So the actual is going to be somewhere in the middle. So that, we think is a concern that Quest probably has with this per capita, using the per capita tuition charge also. So when we started thinking about this in our discussions with Quest, we thought the goals for the new funding model, it needs to be appropriate and reasonable for both of us for this to work. We must address the identified issues related to the per capita tuition charge. We should tie this more closely with available revenue that we have unrestricted district revenue. And we should, we should occur, should assure that both the school district and Quest, the students in both of those schools, or those schools, have equitable funding support. So the recommended funding model establishes a base for 2016. So that's the first year of the five-year agreement of $5.1 million. And that's, again, from the previous slide, it's a 23% increase above the current funding. So this includes funding for 570 students, which is an increase of 66 students. And the base funding level that we would establish in 2016 is based on 85% of our district's per capita tuition charge. Again, this is just to establish a base funding level for 2016. And they'll, as we do now, will continue to make adjustments to that funding level if enrollments don't meet their projected target. In this recommended funding model for fiscal years 17 to 20, each year, Quest funding base would be increased based on the district's two-year average change in our general state aid. So we would look at how our state aid appropriated by the State Board of Education changed over a two-year period, average that, and that would be used to increase Quest funding. So it's tied directly to our state aid funding. So the last two years, our averages were 2.8% and the most recent two-year period was 2.5%.
Just, just a question. That, that says that the state increased its general aid by that amount?
On average, over that two-year period.
Somehow that doesn't match with what I understand about what the state's been providing to us. Maybe I'm completely off pace.
I understand your question. I can provide the, the numbers to you. I don't have them right in front of me, but yeah.
Okay. Well, if the, let's, let's do this. Is the actual number of dollars we receive from the state higher or lower this year than it was two years ago?
It's, it's increased over the two-year period.
Correct.
On average. And again, some of these years, it's, and I, again, I apologize, I didn't bring it with me, but some years it would go up 4%, then it would drop the next year. So there's, there's an uneven pattern in state funding also.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm having a hard time reconciling that with my understanding of what the state's doing. So we can have that conversation later to avoid making this a long.
Well, I think, I think the challenge with state funding is the proration. I mean, that's where, the proration is what's causing the district, that's where the shortfall in state funding is. Right now, we're appropriated at 89, or we're funded at 89% of the formula amount from the State Board of Education.
So if that proration drops, the formula still goes up?
If the proration drops, well, there's a, there's a foundation level. So the State Board of Education computes what our general state aid is based on the foundation level. Then each year, they've been prorating that. So we're prorated at 89% of what the State Board calculated. proration dropped to 60, 66% from the 89%, and that cost the district 89, or $11 million. So it's the proration of the, the formula that's really causing problems.
So under this scenario, the state could reduce its proration to us, and yet we'd still be obligated to pay more in the following year?
No, if the, if the dis, if the proration increased, like the scenario 88% or 66%, then the funding to Quest would also decrease. So that's why it's tied in with the actual amount of money that we receive.
Well, please proceed, but I'm, I'm, this is not, this is, this is not clear to me as to how that, you reconcile those two different approaches, and maybe I'm the only one in the room confused, but that does not seem to make sense to me.
Okay, here's, here's the numbers. From 2001, we were at $43 million in state funding. This is what the general state, 43 million. In 2012, it dropped to 42 million, was 42.4 in 2013, and 44.4 in 2014. So depending on which period of time you look, if you looked at 11 to 12, we actually dropped $2 million. If you look 12 to 13, 12 to 13, we went from 42 million to 42.4. This year, we went from four, or in 2014, we went from 42.4 to 44.4. So it's a very uneven pattern.
I, I understand the concept behind this, and that is equal sharing of risk. That's what you're trying, attempting to get to.
The concept, yes. The, the concept is that as our general state aid changes, the funding for Quest will also change. If our general state aid increases, their funding will increase. If our general state aid decreases, their, their funding will decrease.
I would just hope that this formula doesn't produce the exact opposite result of what you're trying to get. And I, my confidence in what the state of Illinois is going to do is pretty low, so let's keep that in mind.
Okay, these are summary points, so key points. Quest funding model, again, it must be appropriate, these are ones we talked about earlier, and we think this recommended model does satisfy this, that it's appropriate, reasonable and fair for, for both entities. This model recognizes issues with the per capita tuition charge and only uses that to establish the funding base in year one. Linking Quest funding to changes in our district's state aid assures that funding for Quest students will trend in a manner similar to funding for District 150 students, and the funding model has been discussed and agreed to by the negotiating teams from Quest and District 150. So, Rick Wright.
One, one thing you didn't have on there is that we've agreed that at the end of the third year of the agreement, if either side wants to reopen the financial arrangement, we can re, we can open that up depending on what's going on at that time and, and look at it again to see if it's still working for both sides for discussion.
That's correct. Other questions?
Any other questions from board members? Did you want to talk a little bit about the process now as far as?
Going forward?
Yeah, as far as the requirements for putting it, the agreement on display, and then at the next meeting, there'll be a, a hearing and for the public to comment, and the vote would be at the next meeting.
Yes, the, the statute doesn't express the require that on a renewal that we go through this process, but via the State Board regulations for the renewal of the contract, it does require that the, before the contract is presented to the board for approval, we have to publish a, a notice in the newspaper when that's going to take place, and, and that, that the subject of charter schools is going to be discussed at that meeting. So that notice will be probably, has to be no, no, less than five days, no more than 10 days before the meeting, so we, we are prepared to, you know, put the notice in at an appropriate time beforehand. Not to mention, it will also be posted, as our regular meetings are always posted, but there's this one additional requirement, it's really somewhat archaic, but it is required by the State Board, so we have to go through that. So we've kind of analogized this to the process that we use for the approval of the, the budget earlier this, this semester, and so at the next meeting, perhaps we'll do a little more of a summary kind of presentation again, and then it, the, the State Board does not require a formal hearing.
Okay.
But, but an opportunity for, for a comment, which, you know.
Okay.
What the distinction is, is there's not much of a distinction, really.
Okay. Mrs. Ross.
I do have one, one clarification. Previously, the Skyword has been used for special education students only.
That's correct. That's what I'm, that's what I'm told.
And going forward, the Skyword would be used to document all students.
Yes.
Information, so there's a, we will have access to the academics in that, of each student.
There will be access to a greater amount of information, yes. The details of that have not necessarily been worked out, but, you know, whatever, whatever is contained in Skyword should be available for the questions as well.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. That brings us, that brings us to the approval of the amendments for January 12, 2015. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes? Second. Would you call the roll? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are now at audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question and answer session, and it is not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments once the audience comments are completed. Recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects, topics relating directly to district personnel, and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. Please also keep in mind that just because something can be said does not necessarily mean that it should be said. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school.
My name is Marilyn Woods. Good evening, school board members, President and Superintendent Dr. Lathan. Thank you for allowing me to address the board tonight. On Sunday, November 23rd, District 150 offered all of its students the opportunity to attend a Bradley basketball game at the Puria Civic Center. This event was free of charge and included transportation and a tee-shirt for each student. For some, this would, this would be a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Initially, this activity was highlighted in the Puria Journal Star as a positive experience. This event was more valuable than just taking a kid to a basketball game. Participation in this event was aligned with our avid initiative, college-bound, and all the other programs the district provides for our students. This was a win-win opportunity for our students as well as Bradley University. Nevertheless, a positive event for all of our students was denounced and chastised by groups who believe they are the voices of change. However, in contrast, information was shared how much money was spent to sponsor such an event. Consequently, it was noted where Dr. Lathan was seated and how she was not engaged with the students. Personally, personally, reading negative comments about such a positive event is demoralizing. Apparently, in addition to the previously mentioned situation, there were accusations strongly supported by the voices of change in the media regarding an incident between Dr. Lathan and a basketball referee. Bringing up trivial details without knowing the situation or facts, it appears to me that Dr. Lathan is being stalked, and someone is keeping a close watch on her every step inside, inside and outside of the administration building. As a staff member working closely with students every day, it is perplexing that current and former teachers and administrators are aligning themselves with such negative voices. Their number-one goal indirectly, or in some cases directly, is to segregate or disenfranchise some of our less fortunate students, the opportunity, opportunities afforded to some of the students are privileged. This type of behavior needs to be terminated. Rather, this time and energy should be redirected towards the development and support of improving students' academic progress throughout the district. We are always looking for volunteers with a wealth of knowledge to help bridge the academic gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Savino Sierra.
Savino Sierra, from the far south side of the Puria. There's still a lot of ills in this District 150, you know. And I've been on you about discipline, upkeep of our physical plants, and you still ain't doing a very good job, you know. You haven't corrected a lot of the old things, and they, you try other programs, other, other ways, you know, and you still ain't making the grade, you know. When it comes to the tests and all that, you're not getting it, you know. I talked to, you know, you, talking about prepping these kids even when they're kindergarten and that for college, you know what I mean? That's bad, you know what I mean? You know, because, I talked to a lot of the students, I talked to a lot of the college kids. You ask them, what are you working for? They don't know. They're just going to, they're just going to college because that's, that's the thing to do, you know what I mean? I've worked in colleges, and I, and I see how a lot of these students really are, you know what I mean? When they don't understand what the professors are talking about and what have you, you know? And I say you're failing, these kids, you know, because you try to cram too much into their mind too fast, and they, they just can't handle it all at one time, you know? Let them, let them grow up, you know, let them, natural, don't try to, you know, you people to make yourself look good, you know? You start these programs, you take trips, you come back. I don't hear too much about what you learned or what you're gonna do with it, you know what I mean? A lot of times, we bring up a, a subject, and you people don't answer it, you know? You just rattle off something right quick, and that's it. And I think you better try some, go back to some of the old schooling, you know? And I'm telling you, another thing, you know, this is Catholic Education Week, and they, they saving the public schools a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. Your time's up.
Okay, I'll finish the next time.
Thank you. Terry Knapp.
Yes, Terry Knapp. If I remember correctly, in an interview with Gary Moore on television, Lathan said that titles are unimportant to me. At a recent basketball game, Harrison was playing, I believe at Mark Bill's, and she was there as a parent watching her daughter cheer. At that particular game, a mass text had been sent to the officials telling the officials specifically, and this is a quote, that tell Harrison that the games start at 3:30, not 3:45. Harrison that day arrived at 4:15, which was 45 minutes late. One of the officials had obligations beyond the day, as did the scorekeeper at the table. Mr. Chaney was aware of this. He told, as the students and the coach came in from Harrison and seemingly were in no hurry to get to the locker room, he told them that they had one minute to get dressed, which was not literal, they obviously were going to get dressed, and that they would have a running clock in the first half. Both coaches agreed to this. The coach was actually on the radio from Harrison and said that he agreed with this. At that particular time, a person came out of the stands, walked across the floor, and up to the back of Mr. Chaney and said she wanted to talk to Mr. Chaney, and she said she wanted to discuss what was going on. Mr. Chaney was the official. The official, I've been involved for 50 years in coaching and sports, I have never seen an official not be in charge of a game. He was approached, and the person, he turned his back on this person, not knowing who the person was at the particular time, not that that would matter, because he was in charge of the game. He was in charge. This person then flipped out and said, "Don't turn your back on me, I'm the superintendent," to which Mr. Chaney just walked away. And then, in the third quarter, Mr. Chaney was removed from the game by Mr. Barber, who was sent, I believe, by Ms. Lathan, to tell him that he would no longer work the rest of the game, and Mr. Barber worked the rest of the game at her behest. He would never have done this otherwise, believe me. He's an official. Officials don't do that to each other. That's totally upstaging that particular power figure at that time. People watched this. It was not two ball, two weeks later, in January, that a melee broke out at Von Steuben, and people in the stands says, "I'm a board member's family member, and you can't do anything to me," to the police. The police were summoned, 911 call, because it was out of control. The official in that game ran to a classroom and locked themselves in. The cheerleaders were ushered into the cafeteria for safety. This is a total safety issue and a bad example.
Sharon Cruz.
Again, about the November Bradley game, I admit it's overkill, but I couldn't resist the urge to write a FOIA request to find out by name the employees and board members who sat in special seats away from the students, and how much the tickets cost, and who paid for them. I was amused to learn that my request was too burdensome for the usual five-day response time. I believe that the request was burdensome only because the powers that be did not want me to receive any more data about this event, at least until after this board meeting. I must admit my own surprise that the initial report caught the attention of a Puria Journal Star reporter, the editor, and a columnist. I wish the PJ Star, especially the sportswriter, had caught wind of the ref versus superintendent controversy at the Harrison versus Mark Bill's game, and the attack on the ref by parents at the Von Steuben versus Calvin Coolidge game. Juan Chaney is yet another victim of my way or the highway leadership. I continue to have questions about the way District 150's spending is not reported to the public or voted on in public. The November 20 receipt states that District 150 paid $4,500 to Bradley for 900 tickets. $4,500 does fit the category of purchase orders over $2,500, right? Yet the Bradley tickets do not appear on the minutes for Yet the Bradley tickets do not appear on the minutes for November 23rd or December 15 meetings. Why has this expenditure, and in fact, the event itself, never been approved? I am quite convinced that if Terry and I had not sought information and received unsolicited information and reported that data, few would have known about the event, and only those in Wisconsin Avenue would have known about the $10,000 price tag. Neither James Rayner nor the Balanced Literacy Program mentioned on the 2013-14 Statement of Affairs, yet the program was paid over $100,000. Again, if we had not requested and reported this data, few, if any, would know that the district has sunk over $300,000 into a program that couldn't keep Harrison and Roosevelt from being the two lowest performing primary schools in Illinois. When will transparency begin? Prior to this year, the Statement of Affairs was headed with this statement, "This listing must be published in the local newspaper. If that is a requirement, when was it published in the Peoria Journal-Star?" By the way, someone please explain why James Rayner was almost totally ignored and spoke only during the public comment time. That was strange, to say the least. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Duffenbaugh. In 2000, July of 2005, the National School Public Relations Association started or established the Communication Accountability Project. This project was threefold, and there were three research projects that were launched at this time. The goal of the research was to find out characteristics that were what made, pardon me, effective superintendents in schools. What they decided to do between September of 2005 and June of 2006, they interviewed superintendents that had been nationally recognized as superintendents of the year by either the National Association or their states. During this time, they actually conducted in-person interviews with these individuals, and they asked them many questions. The survey results were not really astonishing by any sense of the word, but they are enlightening. Specific things that they asked were, "What do, what do you find makes you such a successful superintendent, and why are your school districts successful?" The number one answer from all 17 superintendents was communication with the public that they serve. We do not have that in this district. We haven't had it for five years. We are going downhill and downhill fast, and nobody on the horseshoe cares. I've been coming to these meetings for well over a year, speaking to you, I've talked to you by phone, you guys don't care. In little less than two months, there is going to be an election, and two board seats are up. And I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, those two board seats will be filled. The thing that I found surprising when I was going through and looking at the research, when they were talking about this, they talked about the top skill crucial for being critical to superintendent's success was vision and leadership. What Terry just spoke about is not leadership. Dr. Lathan removed a principal for less action than what she showed at that basketball game. And sitting there smug, Mrs. Lathan, with a smile on your face as we're talking about this, is exactly what I'm speaking to. If you think for one second that at a basketball game you're in charge, you are wrong. If we as parents or anyone behave that way at a basketball game, we would be asked to leave or be removed. That is how we keep order when we have athletic events. This needs to change.
Well, good evening. My name is Bob Gates, I live at 319 West Terrace Lane in Peoria. Speaking as the volunteer chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and first, it's great to see so many faces. This is actually the first time I've ever been a member of the public addressing any board, for that matter. So it's a pleasure to be with you. As a volunteer chairman of the chamber, a couple of folks that are with me tonight, Jeff Griffin, our recent president, John Sane, chairman of our education committee, and an alumni of the chamber, Rob Parks. Also, one of my fellow board members, Tom Fleegy, serves on the chamber board. And we're here tonight because I just wanted to talk about two things regarding Quest. First, choice, and then, second, leadership. First, with, this is the first time seeing some of the details, but wanted to echo something that Dr. Lathan said earlier, which is, it is valuable to have the culture that District 150 have, has, which is choice within the schools. Choice whether it's at Woodruff and the Cosmetology Program, choice at Quest, choice at many of the programs that are being offered. And at the chamber, we encourage that continuation of that culture and are grateful for your efforts to continue to provide that. Second, going back to something mentioned earlier, I think it's great anytime that a presentation is made by a chief legal officer and a CFO. I can't think of two better people, but that's me. That being said, it demonstrated that leadership was what was necessary to bring the parties and all the community members to this point, which is finding a creative solution, identifying what's good for the community, and looking about how to get the job done. Without knowing, again, some of the details before tonight, what resonated with me is that the parties came together, came together with that exact look, that exact goal, and certainly that same focus to get it done. And as a member of the chamber, excuse me, as the chairman of the chamber, we would applaud that, we encourage it, and certainly are grateful for the efforts by all the parties to bring this hopefully to a resolution, and are very much looking forward to a positive vote at your next board meeting, I believe you mentioned on February 9th. With that, thank you very much for your time, and very much appreciate it.
My name is Marie Lindahl, and I just wanted to come take a minute to say thank you. Thank you for giving the families of District 150 a choice by negotiating a charter renewal contract for Quest Charter Academy. My oldest has been at Quest since day one of its opening, and we have loved every minute. Quest has provided a quality education option for my girls, and the teachers at Quest are wonderful, and I can tell how much they care about my girls' education and their well-being. My second daughter, who's in sixth grade this year, has a 504 plan and has had some academic struggles this year. Her teachers have been there to support her. I receive phone calls, emails, and even get to make additional meetings to work with the Quest teaching staff to find solutions for her education need. I love that I, nothing goes unnoticed and that they want her to succeed. The longer hours, school day hours, and this longer school year with a focus on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics is just what my oldest needs. Through her years at Quest, she has excelled in math, now taking geometry, which is a sophomore class, and she's only a freshman, and getting a full intro into engineering through the project Lead the Way this year. That with, along with the gateway to technology that she had at the middle school level, has made her change her career focus to becoming an engineer and looking at a variety of colleges and universities. Thank you for providing the families of District 150 with this choice, and I look forward for my third daughter starting this fall and my next one after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Romano.
Phil Romano, 3321 North 12 Oaks. First off, I want to say thank you to the board for having the strategic planning meetings. It's one of the first times I've seen some interaction between the public and some board That's as far as I go with that. I see a serious problem with the format in these strategic planning meetings. We had a strategic plan in this district done 10 years ago. Took about a year to do that strategic plan, had buy-in from all the community. It's nowhere to be seen, it hasn't been talked about. That document should have been the format for these strategic planning meetings. We should have gone through that document, disregarded all the obsolete material, and looked at it and said, "Okay, how do we revamp this? How do we make it current? How do we make it better?" I feel the current format is really flawed. Anybody can come in, we don't have buy, we don't have a lot of people there that need to be there. A lot of community organizations need to be there. Sure, it was an open invitation, but that doesn't mean people are gonna come. We need to have everybody involved, city, county, police, fire, teachers, administrators, support staff, union, non-union, churches, everybody needs to be involved in this, and it's not something you rush through in four months. You know, a couple of months, let's have some meetings, let's take some talking points, and wow, we got a strategic plan. No, not, not a good one. Okay? And that's all I'm gonna say about that. Other thing I wanted to do, I wanted to bring up, and I meant to bring this up a long time ago, before everybody gets all excited about online registration, you need to realize that there's some serious flaws. Okay? When a child signs up for an enriched freshman class and you find out that they've been moved into an AP class without notifying a parent, without notifying the child, that's wrong. You know, I, there are very few 14-year-old kids in this district that should be taking an AP class. And, you know, it's happening. Parents weren't notified, students weren't notified, you know, you've got some serious flaws. And if you want to know what I'm talking about, you got my number on the card, you can call me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brenda Wilson. Last year, a board member told me that there are people who attend the meetings every month that I should not listen to because they are liars. I'm a person to see things for myself before forming an opinion, so I listened, and what struck me was that these liars are merely sharing information from their FOIA reports. I highly doubt that in all their years of teaching, that they ever pictured their retirement years to involve FOIA reports and public speeches to you twice a month. That being said, the community is thankful for their dedication. How would we ever know the truth? We probably would have heard about the Bradley game and how great it was without hearing about the lack of planning and overspending that took place. I am not saying that it's not a good idea to take kids to a ballgame, I think it's great. I just think that it should have been funded another way, and I believe with proper planning, that could have been possible. I truly believe that without Sharon's speech, that that information from her FOIA report would have never gone public. We would love to hear how you, the school board, feel about that situation, as well as other situations that have recently hit the local news. I've heard a couple of you mention in the past that you need real people with names and real occurrences to instill change in the school district. You claim that you hear complaints, but they don't involve fact-based information that's necessary for you to get involved and help. I reached out to two of you almost immediately after I heard that statement at a town hall meeting. Thanks to those of you who attended the town hall meeting, and thanks to Change 150 for even having a town hall meeting. I had noticed that someone had tampered with my employee profile, which affects my ability to accept jobs as a substitute teacher. Here I am, a real person with facts in a real situation. One of you never followed up with me. The other one told me that it was an HR issue. I met with the principal, I spoke to HR, even Dr. Lathan herself called me regarding the situation. The funny thing is, is that none of their stories matched up. And sadly, after doing my homework, it was ultimately the FOIA report that answered my questions. The FOIA report validated my suspicion that the explanations I was given were fabricated versions of the truth. It is a sad state when we as taxpayers, taxpayers, parents, and employees have to resort to a FOIA request to get the truth of what is really going on in District 150. You don't seem to be listening to us. My speeches at this very podium have discriminated me for exercising my right to freedom of speech with my job. I am running for school board because I like the idea of someone sitting in that horseshoe that knows exactly how the parents feel and exactly how the employees are treated, and I would rather volunteer to help be a part of the solution than get paid to watch the shenanigans any longer. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trent Johnson. I live at 3224 North Sheridan Road here in Peoria, Illinois. I've worked for Family Cor, however, I am a school counselor at Peoria District 150 for Franklin Primary School. I'd just like to talk a little bit about AVID and how it is working at Franklin Primary School. Although we are hearing a lot of things about AVID not necessarily being what it is supposed to be doing here at the school, I'd just like to let you know that at Franklin Primary School, AVID is working. At Franklin Primary School, we have hosted the first-ever mid-region conference for AVID here in the city of Peoria. So AVID has been recognized in Peoria by Franklin Primary School in this mid-regional level. AVID in regards to our students at Franklin Primary School, when we had the school board, state of the union, or state of the school district, we had Franklin Primary School ambassadors serving and performing at that, and I think that was a Chamber of Commerce event that was hosted. And as a matter of fact, we have witnessed AVID at work tonight through the Socratic Seminar. We got a horseshoe-type situation here with the school board, and we had people stating various positions about various topics. So AVID is working here in the district. So in terms of AVID and our students at Franklin Primary School, we are allowed to do field trips at the colleges, which is what AVID is all about, is the college readiness system. Our kids are participating, and as a matter of fact, as a result of some of the recommendations from our staff members, three of our students right now have been selected to be nominated potentially to be going to Chicago Loyola University for the STEM Leadership Program this summer. So we just recently completed three applications for students. We're requesting scholarship money for those students for District 150. So District 150 is not paying all the costs for our students, our students are actually working too, to bring in income for themselves as part of the AVID process and project that's going on in District 150. Also, at Franklin Primary School, we are hosting what we call our AVID nights, where we are actually going out at various restaurants, Subway, McDonald's, Avanti's Arisa, where we're doing our AVID nights, raising funds for our school students as well. So the district is not paying all the money from the district budget for AVID to be funded. We are working as a team and, okay, my time is up, but AVID is working. AVID is working, Socratic Seminars going on.
Thank you. Tom Fleegy.
As I said before, my name's Tom Fleegy. I reside at 7810 North Galena Road. I am over 18 years old, so that's a concern for anybody. I'm here tonight to thank publicly Board President Wolfmeyer, Board Vice President Butler, and CFO Mark Wilcoxen for negotiating in good faith with the members of Quest Board of Directors. And I speak on behalf of Board President Glenn Barton and all of the Board of Directors to thank you for operating and negotiating in good faith. As was true with any agreement, neither side got everything that they wanted, neither side was 100% happy. This agreement imposes some stretch goals for us, there's no doubt about it. Fundraising is a major part of what we'll have to do to be, to remain solvent. However, the fact of the matter is, we suggested a relook at the financials of this agreement after three years, because we recognize that we're all in the same lifeboat. Fact of the matter is that we view ourselves as a partnership with District 150. And were we to handcuff you into an agreement that lasted for five years, in the environment that we're in right now, when we don't know what's gonna happen with Senate Bill 16, and in fact, we don't know how the state of Illinois is going to administer public education funding, that would have been operating in bad faith, and that's not what we're about. This is about our students, and our students are your students. These are the children of District 150. So to that extent, we were very upfront and transparent about the minimum that we needed to be successful, to survive, to sustain, but also understand the position that you're in as you deal. in, as you deal in very difficult situation with financing the district and the obstacles that you face. We recognize those, we appreciate those, and the fact is, we are in that same lifeboat with you. So, again, we'd like to thank Board President Wolfmeyer, Vice President Butler, and CFO Wilcoxen for operating in good faith and reaching an agreement that hopefully both boards can approve, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. But the credit goes to the whole board, because we sat down and talked with representatives, but it was the whole board that looked at the agreement and agreed to work with that. So, it's the whole board that deserves the thanks for that. I have two things I want to address about the public comment. First of all, about the basketball game at Markville's, I just want to simply say that, for those of you who are upset over that whole incident, you also need to talk to some other people who were at that basketball game besides the referee. There are people who were at that game and have a whole different version of the events and how it happened. The other statement I'm going to make is that I have lived with the basketball referee for over 39-years, and while you are correct in saying that, oh, time's up. And while you are correct in saying that a referee is in charge of the game, that is true once the game starts, but a referee does not decide when to call a forfeit. In regards to the Bradley basketball game, the field trip, I just want to point out that this is not an off-the-wall thing, that has never happened before. We send our children to many different events where we have to pay for admission. We send them to symphony events, we send them to Nutcracker events at the Civic Center, we send them to Riverman Games. Last spring, we sent a large contingent of students to an engineering day at Six Flags down by St. Louis. So, this is by no means something new. It became a district-wide thing when a lot of interest was shown, and so I just want to put that out there, this is not an off-the-wall thing that happened out of the blue. These kinds of experiences are provided for our children all the time. Most of the time, they are not in this big of numbers, but the schools have funds that they are allowed to do with what they want for their children. So, I just wanted to do that, I don't know if any other board members have any comments about any of the audience comments or not.
I would just like to know which board members went to the game. Okay, it was mentioned, something about board members being at the game, and I wasn't aware. No, it was something about the Bradley game. Where Dr. Lathan was seated, where we were seated, and I wasn't aware of any board members being there, and I just wanted to, while we were all together, to see who went.
Mr. Cloyde.
In reference to the strategic planning meeting, the district's current strategic plan is available on the website, it's very detailed, it's about, what, 150-some pages? And if you would like to bring that and discuss it at the next planning meeting, please do so. You can bring it in PDF form on a computer and look at it, you don't have to have it printed out. I have it on my computer, so you can look at it, but it's there, and it's in detail. And I think one of the things we need to put in perspective is, that that plan was put together to focus on two things, academics and facilities. And there were many other attributes of the operations of the district that were not included in that, because those were the two most important things that were focused on when it was written. Those were critical and had to be addressed first. The attempt here now is to have a strategic plan that addresses a broader range of issues on a more business-like setting, simply because we've taken care of some of the other issues and things that are, in addition to that, need to be addressed. So, I would welcome you bringing that and bringing those ideas forward at the next meeting.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank Mr. Cloyde for offering up information to come to those forums. Again, he is correct, it's for broader issues, and it's also for community input. The way it is set up now, there is no one in this community that can say they didn't have the opportunity to come and be a part of this at the forums, or to submit information to the website, send us information by email. This is a community effort, and I don't see any better way to do it until the night. I'd heard very positive feedback, so thank you also for what you added to that, Mr. Cloyde.
Anybody else? Mrs. Ross.
Yeah, I just want everyone to keep in mind that the mission and goal of District 150 is still the same, and the strategic plan is in place, and has been in place, I was part of the first one that was developed. And again, we're still working towards the same goal, and that is to educate our children, but the mission and goal is still the same, however we craft, how we do that is changing our strategy sometime, and we're inviting the public to be able to help us do that.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to information items. First one is a first reading of board policy, number 4:115, and the administrative procedure 4:115, school district-owned vehicles other than school buses. Mr. Cloyde, do you want to take this?
Yes, I could comment on it, and Mr. Redberg might add to that, but this is a policy area that was not part of our current policy, and it's something that we're developing based on the need to have this articulated and also administrative procedure to enforce it. So, Mr. Redberg, if you'd care to comment on the salient facts and features of this policy in brief?
Well, I think that whenever you drive a car, you know, there's the rules of the road, and if you go out and rent a car, and someone gives you a car that does not belong to you, you sign a very complicated document that basically gives you the rules of what you can and cannot do with that vehicle. We have a few people in the district who, well, we have quite a number of people who are required to drive district-owned vehicles, but a few of those people are also required as a condition of their employment to take those cars home with them and to be available 24/7. And we simply did not have a procedure that sets forth what the rules and regulations are, things saying, you know, just emphasizing a point that I think has always been kind of assumed, which is that the use of a district-owned vehicle is for business purposes and not for personal purposes, that sort of thing. So, this policy has been developed to do that, and another thing that has not been a practice in the district is that under the IRS rules, some of the benefits that employees receive by simply having a company car, so to speak, to drive to and from work, is a taxable benefit, so that's a question we need to address, and this policy addresses that as well.
And the total number of employees impacted by this is roughly?
I would say it's probably less than half a dozen.
Okay.
So, we didn't have this policy at all before?
That's correct.
A new policy, okay.
This is new.
So, at the next meeting, then it will be an action item to actually adopt?
Yep. And there's a draft of it that you received, and if you see anything in there that needs to be revised or edited, please let me or Ms. Kostick know, so we can get it cleaned up and ready for final approval.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Ross?
Please have a quick question. Give me an example of who would be able to take a car home, other than transportation and?
Well, security, security people, buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, okay.
You know, people who need, who might need to respond to a break-in in a school in the middle of the night, that sort of thing.
That doesn't include the driver's ed people? It used to, so, okay, thank you.
No, we're not, by bringing this policy, we're not contemplating any great expansion of the number of people, I mean, that hasn't been thought of, but just with respect to the people whose jobs do, you know, where it makes sense for them to have a car 24/7, you know, they and the district knows what the rules are.
And, but the driver's ed cards are left parked at school now, because you're right, they used to, they used to take those home.
On vacation.
Okay, that brings us to POs over $2,500. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilcoxen tonight?
Yeah.
Mr. Bateman.
First of all, I noticed as I looked down through, there were quite a number of purchases for computers, iPads, things like that. Was curious as to the nature, are they for park, are they instructional, what's the nature of those computers?
Both, but mainly for park, park is unfunded mandate that required us to purchase additional technologies in the form of desktops or laptops, also additional resources as it relates to, like, separating the computers, so you think about a privacy, carol, and things of that nature. So, there were many, many purchases, almost worth a half a million dollars of purchases that we had to make to get prepared for park, which starts in March. Yep, park is our, replaces ISAT, we start that testing in March, and actually, it will go between March and the middle of May, because there's an assessment that we'll administer in March, and then the end-of-year assessment that we're required to administer in May, third through eighth-grade student, and then selected courses in high school.
And the difference is, the ISAT was paper pencil?
Paper pencil.
And the park is all on computer, and that's why we have to supply the appropriate technology for that?
So, we're installing some temporary labs at schools, and also some permanent labs, so it's a combination, and it varies from building to building based on the technology that already exists.
Mr. Cloyde, oh, Ms. Kostick.
Can you explain what the, what these things will be used for after testing is completed?
They will, most of the, like, the laptops will be on the cart, so teachers will be able to check them out. The desktops will be, if we create an actual computer lab, they'll stay in the computer lab, and then whole classes will go in there. So, this depends on the location in the building. I can share with you by building where those locations will be far, so temporary computers, and then also the desktops that have been purchased, the permanent stations.
And the furniture?
The furniture will be, the carousels and different things like that will be sent back, and we'll keep those and store those for future use, but the furniture will be, if it's going to be a permanent lab, the furniture will stay at the schools.
Yes, there was an item in there for Elevate K-12.
We have four, five, I think, there's one more school that needs to come online that are participating in online tutoring. It's actually a combination of computerized instruction and also a live tutor. The thing that piqued us especially as it relates to Harrison K-8 participating, is the tutors are also fluent in Spanish, and so they help provide that tutoring to those students. So, student principals were able to look at the information last fall, and then those schools made a decision they wanted to participate. We also looked at schools where we had a shortage of classroom teachers, and so to be able to provide students the support in math.
Okay, then I've got some, maybe some observations about some energy things, but I'll save that to the end as suggestions.
Okay.
It deals with the numbers in here, but it's really more about planning in the future, so.
Can I go back to, go back to the park? I mean, this isn't just a one-time thing, this is every year now until they change it again.
Yes, it'll be every year.
So, everything we have will just be either keeping it in place or stored.
Yes, and also, the projection is eventually there will be assessments in the fall, and then also the spring of the year, but we will be keeping everything and moving forward. That is the new mandated state requirement for testing, is park and implementing it online.
Because, you know, there's several students still, I mean, we have a whole group of students still doing NWA, and that's on the computer too.
Yes, we've been in WA for many years.
Mr. Bateman.
The last thing tied to the purchase of computers and that, what is our state of preparedness now for park? Do we still have a number we still need to get, are we still in pretty good shape?
We've pretty much, the cycle has pretty much ordered everything far as the computers.
Yes, we've ordered everything as far as the computers, the tables, furniture, the carols, everything's been ordered.
So, now it's just installing and setting everything up?
And that's all been contained in these POs we've seen so far?
Some things will continue to come in, for most part, I believe, the furniture, there was furniture on there this time around, and we have it listed by school. For example, you'll see, like, Hines Primary says park testing furniture, you'll see Harrison Park testing furniture, Glen Oak, so we've placed every, I think everything has been put in, and I'm just checking by the schools too. Pretty much over the last several months, all the POs have been put in.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last question. How much of this approximately was funded through the technology grant?
No technology grant, Ed Fund, I mean, once again, it was an unfunded mandate, so the $500,000 that we've practically spent came out of the Ed Fund. So, grand total right now, $490,000, $494.74.
Ms. Kostick.
It looks like, basically, the primary school furniture has been ordered, but what about for the high schools?
The high schools, we have the labs that, as it relates to accommodating them, because high school is Algebra I, English I, and English II, if I'm not mistaken. Have I missed that, guys? Those are the three classes for high school. Algebra I, English I.
English III and Algebra II.
English III and Algebra II. So, we have enough as it relates to those labs.
Any other questions on POs? Okay, reported requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests?
Since our last board meeting report on January 12, 2015, we've received seven new Freedom of Information Act requests. All these new requests were filled. There was one pending request noted on the January 12, 2015 board report, this request was filled. We received eight requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Reverend Butler, would you please summarize the gifts to the school district for tonight's meeting?
Yes. Gifts to the school district for this meeting total $1,186. Year-to-date, the total was $10,113. The proposed action is that the following donations be accepted in letters of appreciation sent to the donors. Also, just want to make note that donations totaling $33,231 were made to the Peoria Public Schools Foundation.
Thank you. Consent agenda tonight consists of the gifts to the school district, the payment of bills, the human resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee, payment for travel, number five is field trip approval, the proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Richwoods Marine Corps ROTC program to travel to Camp Perry Clinton, Ohio, February 11, 2015, through February 15, 2015, to compete in the JROTC Air Rifle Service Championship per board policy 6:240 as presented. The JROTC program will be funding lodging and transportation, lodging and transportation and meals will be at the cadets' expense. No students will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Item six is the Peoria High School cheerleading field trip approval. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the field trip for Peoria High School cheerleading squad per board policy 6:240 as presented. The Peoria High Cheerleading Squad will be traveling to the Holiday Bowl in San Diego, California, the Alamo Bowl in San Antonio, Texas, or the Russell Athletic Bowl in Orlando, Florida, December 26, 2015, through January 1, 2016, to participate in one of the above-named bowl games. Transportation, meals, and hotel expenses will be paid through fundraising efforts. I just want to note, they aren't going to all three, it's one of those three that they were, will be going to. Number seven is in-school health care services agreement. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve an in-school health care services agreement with Unity Health Methodist to provide health centers at three schools in the district, Manuel Academy, Harrison School, and Treewind through June 30, 2015. The district will compensate Unity Point Methodist $216,000 to be paid out of the Illinois Department of Human Services grant. That is the consent agenda for tonight. Are there any items a board member would like pulled for a separate vote? Seeing none, could I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
Some of.
Are there any questions, do you have any, do you have any comments on the items first?
Just on number seven, as it relates to the in-school health care services at Manuel, Harrison, and Treewind, once again, that is a grant-funded program that allows Methodist to operate at those three schools. This agreement runs from July 1 to June 30 of this year. We will start negotiating again as it relates to moving forward. One of the sticking points is Methodist wants to do a calendar year, and we must do a physical year, because we have to wait until we receive the grant funding in order to operate, and so there's some changes that needed to be made, once we found out what our base was going to be as it related to the services that they could provide and the amount that we were receiving.
Okay. And on the JROTC trip, that is a competition that they are going to?
Yes, that is a competition, so they've worked their way up now, they're participating in an actual competition.
Okay. Mr. Crawford?
For the bowl game, how do they select the bowl game they attend?
In the past, from my understanding, they wait once they receive the information, and they look at the costs, and then they start raising funds, but for the past several years, they've been, I think, it's been to Florida, and they've put that same information. So, you look at the information.
And what level of participation they had in the bowl games? And how, what level of participation do they have in bowl games? Do they march in parades and stuff like that?
That's my understanding, is the parade, marching in the parade. And then just being there, participating in the event. Once again, it's another event that ties them back, because it's a college bowl game. So it provides our students that others, to see that other side of college.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Relative to item number seven, and maybe this is not quite as relevant, but I know we went through some discussions about the changes in the property tax status of hospitals. And I think it's important to understand that the state of Illinois changed the law so that hospital properties are no longer required to pay real estate taxes, and the loss of real estate tax revenue to District 150 from this particular institution was about, what, $250,000? Well, it was somewhere in that nature, and I wouldn't want to quote it exactly, but, and we had this discussion, and this is not to disparage this agreement, but on the one hand, we giveth, on the other hand, it taketh away. And I think as hospitals decide that they're going to take their properties off the tax rolls, that impacts the school district. So there's a quarter of a million dollars a year lost by that, and I'm sure there are other hospital organizations to follow.
And I think that's a good point to make, and that's one of the reasons, like I said, as it relates to what the grant funding was, and that concern was shared with the Methodist representatives that participated in the negotiations, but that is a major concern, and that's why we have to utilize grant funds. So we don't know what will happen as we move forward for the upcoming school year, but that does remain to be a concern for us.
I just want to clarify, or just kind of, just shed some light on that Methodist particularly have been partnering with us for a number of years. Initially, I may be wrong, but I don't think there was any cost to some of the health centers from the very beginning with the last amendment.
And they can correct me before me, but we've always paid.
Well, I mean, the individuals that received the assistance initially, when they started out at the Lesca Hinden pad, medical cards and that, and they got paid that way. But I don't, I don't know if we ever paid a cost for them.
We still had to pay a cost.
Well, okay.
We've always paid a cost, and as I said, we've paid more in previous years, and this is the amount, in previous years, it's been up over $300,000. But we've always paid an amount. And so they reduce their services based on what we can pay, even though it's being paid by our grant.
Yeah, I know it's reduced now, but we, at one point, we had seven, seven or so health centers in the schools.
And schools were contributing those funds out of their funds, their allotments.
Are we required to provide those services?
No, sir. No, we're not required. It is a service that it, you know, benefits our students in the community, but we are not required to operate the health centers in our schools.
Okay. So we're doing this as the appropriate thing to do, and the legislature is making it more difficult for us to afford to do this. Thank you.
Anything else? Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross, Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. That brings us to the deliberation agenda, which is discipline.
Expulsions. Proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 26, 2015, be approved as presented.
Second, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross, Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mr. Butler? Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
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 Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. Bullet point nine, revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. Proposed action that the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated January 26, 2015, be approved as presented.
Second, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler? Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman? Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to presentations and suggestions by board members.
No one else?
Mr. Cloyde?
Thank you, ma'am. I went through the purchase orders report, looking at our energy costs that I could identify by name, the supplier, both utilities and fuel and so forth. And it looks like we had about $145,000 worth of expense during the month, and our water bill was about $39,000, $39,500. And I know that we're undertaking some efforts to reduce our energy costs, but we're also trying to do some things that improve the quality of the environment in our schools, both heating and air conditioning, both for the comfort and safety, and also the better classroom environment. And I've heard, in fact, some of the meeting, some of the comments at both of the forums, particularly the one dealing with physical facilities, address the idea that we have many classrooms where the temperature control is just not possible, and it's because the system is old or the controls are not effective. There's another approach to dealing with energy costs in organizations like this. It's called energy service companies. There are a number of them in the United States. There are about 60 of them, and they specialize in putting together programs, particularly for organizations like schools and institutions. In fact, the largest portion of the business of energy supply companies is with primary and secondary schools. And what happens is that they come through your organization, they do an audit of your buildings, and then they identify potential savings. They find an outside party to help finance that, and the cost of that is, in effect, paid for by the energy savings. And I know that we've talked about what it's going to take to air-condition our schools over a period of time, and it's going to take a long time to do that. It seems to me that we ought to be looking at a much more universal approach to this, like engaging with some of these firms. And I know there are some that might be local and some that might be national in nature, but this is an opportunity to take a look at this on a more comprehensive level. I know our staff has approached it, but I know that there's also a set of tools and diagnostic expertise that just doesn't exist in an organization like this. And I would ask that we take a look at that sometime in the next couple of months and see, might, could we, could we do that, or could we engage someone like that and hear from them as to what the possible benefits are? And it typically includes addressing the costs of windows, roofs, lighting, not just the HVAC system. But I know enough about this industry now to know that there are many, many opportunities to reduce costs and to provide a better environment, and we need to be more aggressive about pursuing those. And I don't think it costs us any more than doing it that we were doing it. I'd like to, I'd like to find out whether that's true or not, and I would encourage you to take a look at that.
A little familiar with this. We did this at my previous employer, Northeastern, and we, we got an energy service company, and ended up doing about $6 million in projects through this. Interesting, the low-hanging fruit are generally lighting upgrades, and we've done a lot of those. We're still doing more at the district, but that's kind of the low-hanging fruit, but there were some other things, and it is a good way to finance these projects, because they guarantee the savings. So they will, they will cut your utility bills by the amount that you're actually paying and to pay back the improvements.
Thank you.
Any other presentations or suggestions by board members? How about reports from board committees? Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Thank you very much.